The first thing that we have on this, on the motion sheet is a motion to adopt a rule to allow us to use the electronic voting. Select Board Member Scott Hawkins.
I move, I move to adopt the following rule for this town meeting. Voting by electronic means will replace counted standing votes or votes by show of hands. Electronic votes will also be used in the place of secret paper ballots for the votes. The moderator shall have the discretion to use electronic voting when he deems it desirable to have the complete and accurate vote.
Vote count. Vote count, correct. Yeah. Oh, I'll get to you. Okay, we have a motion to adopt the rule to allow us to use electronic voting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Anybody want to say anything about that motion? If not, we'll have our first vote by electronic rule. If you wish to vote, you may start voting now. I'll call a stop to the vote now. The voting is closed, and the numbers are... 100% in favor, that's 84 to nothing. 85 to zero. Thank you. I'll call on the town clerk to read the call to the meeting and the constable's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester SS, to the Constable of the Town of Berlin in the County of Worcester. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Berlin Memorial School, 34 South Street in said Berlin on Monday, the second day of May 2022, next at 6:30 o'clock in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles or in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid, given under our hands this 11th day of April in the year of our Lord 2022. Berlin Select Board, Margaret Stone, Chairman; our Scott Hawkins, Vice Chair, Christine Keefe, Clerk; Worcester SS. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Berlin by posting up attested copies thereof at the Town Hall, the Town Offices, and the Post Office at least seven days before the time of said meeting as within directed. Kevin Pond, Constable, April 12, 2022.
Now, there were several handouts on the, on the table as you came in, and in particular, the one that starts with annual town meeting motions. I call your attention to that because we will be referring to it constantly, and almost all the motions that we made in the meeting are there in the, in the form in which we expect them to be made. So it saves a lot of time if you can follow the, the motions on that. Many of these are very similar to what it said in the articles in the warrant that you received in the mail, but there may be slight differences here and there in order to suit the needs of the, of the town. Seated before you, the members of the Finance Committee are on your left, the five members of the Finance Committee, and they will be making many motions, particularly those under the budget. In front of me are the three members of the Select Board and the Town Administrator, who will also be speaking at various times during the meeting. And then we have a table over here, which is available for other boards if, at a time when they're presenting, presenting motions before the, before the meeting. So as we go along, we'll try to recognize everybody appropriately in that regard. I'm Barry Edgar, I'm the town moderator, and therefore preside over the town meeting. Eloise Salz, whom you heard a few months ago, is the town clerk, and she is, she is responsible for recording the proceedings of the meeting and helping with various other procedural things in the course of the time. The Assistant Town Clerk, James Wheeler, and, and his staff are here working on the, handling the electronic voting system for us, and that saves us a great deal of time in the course of the meeting.
Tim Wysocki.
Yeah, and Tim Wysocki. The Article One, unpaid bills of prior fiscal years. Mr. Hawkins.
I move the town transfer from fiscal year 22 police department expenses, the sum of $80.92, to pay an unpaid bill from the prior fiscal year to UMass Memorial Health.
Motion is made and seconded. It is as on your, on your sheet. Do you want to speak to it?
This bill arrived after the year closed. State law says that we can't pay those unless there's a motion of town meeting.
Finance Committee's comment?
Eighty bucks.
Hmm?
It's eighty bucks.
Yeah, okay. It's eighties bucks. Okay, that's their comment. All right. Anybody else want to speak on the motion? Because it's an unpaid bill of a previous year, it requires a supermajority of four fifths. So therefore, we need an accurate count of the vote on this. The town owns, owes the money, and I will call, I will open the voting now for Article One motion. It is 90 to two, 90 in favor, two opposed. The motion passes with the required four fifths vote. Mr. Hawkins, the motion for Article Two.
I move that the town amend the vote taken under Article Seven, Items Three and Four of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting to further extend until June 30, 2023, the date by which money must be expended for the purpose of purchasing and equipping new fire and EMS department car to pickup truck, and to replace the non-operational car two, and a new police department vehicle cruiser SUV to replace the 2014 Ford Interceptor SUV, the said non-operational fire and EMS car two, and the police 2014 Ford Inspector SUV to be sold or traded.
Motion is made and seconded, and this is a, an action to modify when the money must be expended for, whom we close out the article. Do you have anything more to say about it, Scott?
Just that the reason this needs to be extended is the same sort of supply chain issues and car availability issues that you have buying personal cars. We've had buying these vehicles as well. They expect to be here in time, but not by the end of this fiscal year.
Finance Committee has a printed recommendation, five to nothing, in favor. Anything further?
Stand by our vote.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, I'm going to ask you to vote by voice. Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Three, Snow and Ice Deficit.
I move that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $50,000 to offset fiscal year 2022 snow and ice expenses account deficits.
Motion made and seconded. Sum of $50,000 for snow and ice expense account deficits. Anyone else? Again, this is, Finance Committee has voted five to nothing in favor. Does anyone else want to add anything? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Article Four. I move that the town amend the scope of Article 18, Item Five, of the June 22, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, for the purpose of the Town Office and Public Safety Parking Lot Repair to include regrading, repaving, and reconstruction of drainage systems, siding, signage, lighting, to also include landscaping, hardscaping, and access improvements to town-owned buildings, and to remove the June 20, sorry, June 30, 2022 Sunset Clause in our, in said Article
Motion is made and seconded in the same form that it is on your motion sheet. This broadens the use of the funds that remain in that article and removes the Sunset Clause so that the article can be, continue on into additional fiscal years. Finance Committee has a five to nothing vote in favor. Anything else to be said on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Five.
Article Five. I move that the town amend the vote taken under Article 13 of the November 8, 2021 Special Town Meeting, Establishment of the Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, to clarify that its purposes include but are not limited to public safety personnel wages, training, equipment, and supply costs, and to transfer to the Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization Fund all development agreement public safety mitigation receipts, received by the town following the November 8, 2021 Special Town Meeting through June
Motion is made and seconded as it is on your motion sheet. Again, the Finance Committee recommendation is in favor, five to nothing. Is there anything, is anybody want to speak further on this? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Six.
Article Six. I move to pass over Article Six.
Do you want to say something about why?
Right. The negotiation is still ongoing, so this is not needed yet.
The motion is to pass over Article Six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Seven. Chris Keefe.
Hello? Can you hear me? There we go. I move that the town transfer from available ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation the sum of $5,000 to be added to the $315,000 approved under Article Seven of the November 8, 2021 Special Town Meeting for the purchase and equipping of an ambulance to be spent under the direction of the fire and EMS chief.
Motion made and seconded as it is on your motion sheet. Finance Committee has a written recommendation unanimously in favor. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? This has to do with an ambulance that we already voted for, and we need a little more All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article Eight, Supplemental PEG Funding. Cable Access Committee is busy working tonight, as usual, at town meeting. They're recording the meeting, and that will enable folks that aren't here to see it on cable TV and, and be participatory in, in town meeting even though they aren't here to vote. Yes, Pat Anderson.
Pat Anderson, 55 Peachill Road. I move to pass over this Article Eight.
Motion to pass over Article Eight.
Do you need this?
You have a written, it should be written on your paper.
I don't have it written on my papers.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article Eight. Does anyone want to say anything about it? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is passed over with one dissenting vote.
I move that the Select Board or any other board or officer having the proper authority appoint all necessary town officers as may be provided for by statute or other authority, and who are not required by law to be chosen by ballot.
Motion is made and seconded, that the Select Board or any other board or officer having the property, proper authority appoint all necessary town officers as may be provided for by statute or other authority, and who are not required to be chosen by ballot. This is one of those procedural things that we do each year, which undoes the fact that in ancient town meetings, we elected hog reefs and, and toenail trimmers and whatever else at town meeting. And we thought we wouldn't do that right now. At any rate, I'll ask you to vote on the motion as made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I move to approve the motions as printed in the warrant for this meeting under Articles
We have a motion to approve the motions that were printed in the warrant for the meeting. In your original mailer that you got for the meeting, under all of these articles, the motions were already printed there. And this asks us to approve the motions in Articles 10 through 15. All of these are things that have appeared on the warrant many times, each year, because they're procedural things that we, we need to do, and they are, all of them are covered in that way. So the question is, if we take them up together, we might save some time. Is there any comment from the Finance Committee in regard to this, other than what would have been printed previously? As I recall, there's one of these things that requires a two-thirds vote, so therefore we have to make sure we, we cover that. I'm going to call for the vote on the Articles 10 through 15 motions.
Barry. If somebody wants to skip.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you standing there so politely.
That's okay. I've lost so much weight. It's Peter Hoffman, 183 Brandal. I just have a language change to propose. In the last line under motion where it says officers of any board for the action taken hereby...
Just a second. Tell us which article you're on, please.
Oh, sorry, 10.
Article 10.
Last line of the motion paragraph, officers of any board for the action taken hereby. We should add or committee. I serve on a committee, and I think it should be included. So it should read, or I'd suggest it should read, officers of any board or committee for the action taken hereby.
Boards include committees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
Boards include committees.
Well, line, that's fine, but line one has that distinction. But okay.
I'm going to take this by electronic vote. This motion to approve all these motions on 10 through 15, I'm going to take by electronic vote. I'll close the voting, and we'll get the results. 102 in favor, three opposed. Motion passes by the required two-thirds vote. Okay, Article 16. Are there any outstanding, any other committees or offices that didn't get their reported to the annual town report that want to present a, a report now? Am I missing anybody? Hearing none? We will move on to the next article. Article 17. I might add that as we're starting, as we're into this part of the meeting, up through Article Eight, we were dealing with business from the past, past fiscal years and so on. Beginning with Article Nine, we're dealing with the current year and the year coming, the fiscal year that starts on July 1st. So when we're voting for money in those things now, we're dealing with things in the, in the future as opposed to in the past. Chris Keefe.
I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Chapter 53 E and a half, to establish a plumbing and gas inspector wages revolving fund and an electrical inspector wages revolving fund, and set a fiscal year 2023 annual expenditure limit of $75,000 for each such revolving fund. And for such purposes, to amend the table under Article 17 of the Town of Berlin general bylaws by inserting said revolving funds as shown in bold italics and deleting obsolete revolving funds as shown in strike-through, with all remaining balances closed out to the general fund as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Hmm? I suppose it could be 20. Chris tells me that should be Article 20, as it is in the, in your, I want the warrant. For some reason, I don't have it here. In your warrant that was mailed out to you, under Article 17, which in the warrant was No page number. Article 17 was in the warrant. You had a whole page of table, which is like the table that's in the Town Bylaw on, on revolving funds. And this is going to remove the dog licensing fund, the assessors' maps fund, the permitting software fund, which are no longer used, and it's going to add the plumbing and gas expected wages and the electrical expected wages as revolving funds. And secondly, we have... We don't have the limits for the other funds. We don't have the limits for the other funds.
Article 12, the expenditure limits for the...
Has voted under Article 12? Oh, those were in that already. Okay, thank you. All right, this, this covers, this covers the, some changes in the bylaw, as well as the establishment of these two funds. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Finance Committee has a printed recommendation in favor. Does anyone else want to talk? Hearing none? I'll ask you to vote by electronic means. And I will close the voting now. Our results? 101 yes, four no. Motion carries in the, in the affirmative. Article 18, PEG Funds for the New Year. Pat Anderson for the Cable Access Committee.
Hi, Patricia Anderson, 55 Peachill Road, Cable Access Committee. I move that the town appropriate from the Public Education and Government PEG Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $79,535 as a grant to be used for fiscal year 2023 operating purposes, and an additional sum of $50,000 to fund the purchase and installation of audio and video equipment and any costs related to or incidental thereto in meeting rooms located at Town Offices of 23 Linden Street in accordance with the PEG Access Grant and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 3/4, said sums to be expended by the Cable Access Committee.
I have your motion, please. The motion is as it is on your motion sheet. Do you want to speak to it further?
This is, we passed over the other because we started the process. It got very lengthy because of the pandemic, and we got some contracts came in, they were very high. So we turned them down, and we're going to start the process again. This money is not taxpayer money, it is cable money from the subscribers, so there's no tax implications, and we hope to put cameras into meeting rooms at the town offices, so more meetings will be accessible to everyone in the town.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Any further comment? Does anyone else want to talk on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 19, the Fiscal Year 2023 Capital Budget.
Janet Lamy, 102 Derby...
Janet, you need to turn the mic so it's right down to your speaking level.
Janet Lamy, 102 Derby Road. Article 19, Fiscal Year 2023... Janet Lamy, 102 Derby Road. Article 19, fiscal year 2023 capital budget. I move that the town transfers from free cash the sum of $367,614 and transfer from public safety stabilization from the sum of $130,005 for the sum total of $497,619 to fund the fiscal year 2023 capital budget as printed in Article 19 of the warrant for this meeting, with all unexpended or unencumbered funds for items 1, 2, and 3 to be returned to the Public Safety Stabilization Fund upon project closeout.
Janet, would you be happy if we use the word appropriate instead of transfer in regard to stabilization money, which I believe is what law requires?
Did I say it wrong?
No. There's an error in the motion.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Thought it was my reading skills that you taught me in sixth.
Oh, no, no. Absolutely not. That was all perfect. Instead of transfer, the word appropriate, because we appropriate from the stabilization fund. There is a table here, which is, has a series of seven different appropriations on it that are all part of the capital budget for the, for the coming fiscal year. The Capital Planning Committee has unanimously recommended these seven items, and the Finance Committee has unanimously recommended them as well. Does anybody want to speak further on the motion, which includes all the things in that table under it? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. This is a large amount of money. We'll use our clickers and make sure we get everybody's vote accurately recorded. Can we open the voting? Okay, I'm going to close the vote, voting on the, the motion under Article 19 and get our results. We have 101 yes, 5 no. That passes with the required two-thirds majority on any item in it that needs it. Okay, Article 20, the fiscal year 2023 budget. If you thought that was a lot of money, wait to see all these totals. The motions will generally be made by Finance Committee, who have been working on this for some time, and our town administrator in particular, as well as all the various officials and departments of the town that have to provide and propose their budgets to those people. There's always a lot of work that goes into this, and sometimes people don't realize that. Stan Rogulinski of the Finance Committee.
Good evening. Article 20, for the first section of the budget, the general government section, motion, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,378,799 to fund items 1 through 49, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2023.
Now I have your motion, please.
Of course.
Motion is made and seconded. It's the same as it was on your, on your motion sheet. Does anybody want to speak on this motion, or anything else that's on 1 through 49? In your original mailing, at the back of it, on the last three, or two or three pages there, is the, is the motion, is the, excuse me, the budget. And this one covers the first page of the budget, general government, and all the numbers all the way down the side there, and all the departments and, and offices and so forth are funded, that are funded, are shown in that place. Things aren't all in the same item this year, so you can't just refer to a page number and go to it. But that's where you find the information that we're now voting on. Are there any comments in regard to items 1 through 49, or the amount of $1,378,799? Seeing no hands, I'm going to ask you to vote. And again, let's do an electronic vote. Start, start voting now. I'll close the voting now, and we'll get the results. 106 yes, and 4 no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Public safety motion. Mary Porter of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,209,395 to fund items 50 through 71. Transfer from the Public Safety Special Stabilization Fund, the sum of $210,000, to item 51, police wages full-time, $145,410. And item 55, fire and EMS wages full-time, $64,590, to appropriate from rescue squad receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of $100,000, to item 55, fire and EMS wages full-time. For the sum total, $2,519,395, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2023.
Again, would you accept appropriate in place of transfer on the first line there? Just as we appropriate from rescue squads receipts, we also appropriate from stabilization funds. Does anybody else want to speak on the motion in regard to public safety? Again, this is the, the next page in your town, in your original mailer, and at the top half of the page is public safety includes police, fire, and EMS, the inspectors, and communications expenses. I'm not seeing any hands, so I'm going to ask you to vote again. Please vote electronically. I'll open the vote now. I'll close the vote, and we'll get the results. 101 in favor, and 5 opposed. Motion carries in the affirmative. And it has the required two-thirds vote, because we're taking stabilization money. Public Works. Scott Schultz of the Finance Committee.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $760,925 to fund items 72 through 83, to appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, the sum of $4,400 to item 80, transfer station wages part-time, and the sum of $120,000 to item 81, transfer station expenses. And to appropriate the sum of $10,450 from general cemetery receipts, and the sum of $1,400 from sale lots, to item 83, cemetery expenses, for the sum total $897,175, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2023.
You'll note this motion differs slightly from what's in the motion sheet. The transfer station and sticker and recycling offset receipts account, instead of $124,400, we have $4,400 to wages at the transfer station, and $120,000 to expenses at the transfer station, the total amount being $124,400. But it goes into two different accounts in the, in, in funding the budget. Again, this is on that same page below the, the police and fire, and it covers highway, transfer station, cemetery, and a couple of other minor pieces. Anything to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote electronically. Start voting now. I'll close the voting. 103 yes, and 5 no. The motion carries in the affirmative. Human Services.
Well, I'm not sure what it says about us as a town, that our human services is the smallest number in the budget here in this section, but I would also argue that the entire budget is human services. Anyway, motion, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $123,618 to fund items 84 through 96, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2023.
Motion is made and seconded. It's in the same form as on your motion sheet. Does anyone want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote, vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Culture and Recreation.
I didn't recognize my name, Mr. Moderator, but I'm okay. Culture and Recreation, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $186,479 to fund items 97 through 103, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. These are the items under Culture and Recreation. Still working on the budget that was in your original handout that you received in the mail. Anything to be said on this motion? I'm looking at the, looking at the room over my glasses, which means, and these glasses are for distance viewing. I wonder why I can't see any hands. Okay, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Debt and Interest. Scott?
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $298,775 to fund items 104 and 105, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2023.
Anything to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Intergovernmental Expenditure.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. I have this all separated in separate motions. Would you like them done as such with a separate?
Oh, yeah, separate motions for each one.
And then just give you the sheet at the end? Because I only have the one sheet.
We'll do each motion in order. Some of them are really big ones, so.
Right. So the first one is for the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $951 to fund the item, fund item 106, as recommended by the Finance Committee in FY 23.
Oh, you've got them on one sheet. All right. This is $951 for item 6. Does anyone want to speak about this? If not, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
The second portion is for the Assabett Regional Housing Consortium. I move to appropriate the affordable housing account, the sum of $12,000 to fund item 107, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 23.
Affordable housing account, $12,000. Anything to be said on that motion? Seeing no hands, I will ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
The next section, for our friends at Assabett Valley Technical High School. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $649,597 to fund items 108 and 109, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2023. Oh, actually, and also just to make sure folks are aware that the capital assess, or the Assabett assessment for the actual costs of students, our students attending is $581,420, and the capital assessment for building improvements and such is $68,177.
Anything to be said on this motion? This is the operating expenses in item 108, and the capital assessment in 109.
The one thing that I would say to this is that this is a fair amount higher than last year, but this is also due to an increase in enrollment of our students, which is a good thing.
Anyone want to speak further? If not, I'll ask you to vote electronically. We're getting into the big money here. Start voting now. Start voting now. The votes are eighty-seven, yes, and three, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Burl Memorial School. Stanley?
I move to raise and appropriate the small sum of three hundred, or sorry, I wish, uh, $3,598,326 to fund item one-ten and to transfer from free cash the sum of $68,000 to item one-eleven, Burl Memorial Capital Assessment as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY twenty-three. So, the Burl Memorial Assessment is $3,598,326, capital assessment of $68,000.
Motion is made and seconded as printed on your motion sheet. Anything to be said on this motion?
The only thing I would add to this is that this represents a lot of hard work by your school committee and by your finance committee and your town administrator and your accountant to get all of these numbers together, and they've done a tremendous job. Well, we have, and I know they have as well, but thank you.
I'm not hearing anybody speaking, so I'm going to ask you to vote on this electronically, please. I'll close the voting and we'll get the results. One hundred and five, yes, and six, no. The motion carries in the affirmative. Tohoto Regional Middle High School.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,450,800 to fund items one-twelve and one-thirteen and to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,538 to item one-thirteen as recommended, recommended by the Finance Committee FY twenty-three. Tohoto Assessment of $2,942,997. Tohoto Capital Assessment, $518,341.
Motion is made and seconded. Anything to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I will ask you to vote electronically on this. I'll call a halt to the voting and we'll get the results. Ninety-four, yes, and three, no. The motion passes in the affirmative. Miscellaneous Benefits and Insurance. Mary Porter.
Thank you. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,534,032 to fund items one hundred and fourteen through one hundred and twenty-one as recommended by the Finance Committee for
Does anybody want to speak on this? And again, in your, in your budget, this is the last section in the budget, and it's in what was mailed out to you originally, and it includes all the various employee benefits and insurance costs and so on. I'm not seeing any hands. So, I'm going to call for an electronic vote. I'll close the voting and we'll get the results. Eighty-nine, yes, and two, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article twenty-one, Community Preservation Act fiscal year 2023 budget. There are several motions under this. The first motion. Tim Wheeler of the Community Preservation Committee, excuse me, the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Tim Wheeler from 232 Pleasant Street. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Act Committee. I move that the town appropriate or transfer reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023 as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
And again, you have to go back to the warrant booklet that had the budget in it we were just looking at and find Article twenty-one. And you will find there the recommended numbers under Article twenty-one. Do you want to explain anything about this, Tim?
Yes, sir, if I may. As you know, several years ago, in 2018, the town voted to participate in the Community Preservation Act, and as a result, uh, three percent assessment is added to your tax bill. And as a result, revenues are generated on an annual basis, and then the state, depending on their revenue, um, comes up with a match. Now, because we participated three percent and the state situation was beneficial last year, um, the match that Burl received was one hundred percent. There were fourteen towns in the Commonwealth that received one hundred percent, and we were one. Primarily, that's a result of the three percent, but also the fact that we're a fairly small community, and there's a benefit to being small in this case. So that the amount of money that's available for our fiscal twenty-three budget is $562,500. Now, we're responsible for assigning ten percent of that money, or $56,250, to each of three categories. One is community, one is, uh, open space and recreation, one is community housing, and one is historic preservation. And so, that's why you see those sums attached to those particular funds. We also can put some money into an administrative fund for the committee, um, in case we have to do things like assessments and stuff like that. And then we also have money that's put into the budgeted reserve, which is able for, I mean, we're able to pull from that, um, for any of these three projects or three categories. So that's a general explanation, and, and again, the hundred percent was a, a big benefit to the town, and as a result, we have a substantial amount of money that we can expend this year. And so, after this article, there'll be two articles that the Community Preservation Act Committee has recommended. One will deal with historic preservation, and one will, will deal with the acquisition of open space. So, uh, the committee supports both of those, and we hope you will too.
All right, Tim, I just want to make sure that the first line, the $28,125, can be spent under this vote by the committee.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't mean they're gone, but they can.
Right, and what we don't spend, and in the case of this year, a substantial amount of the $21,000 that we generated last year for administrative costs went back into the CPA, um, general fund and can be utilized in the future. So, we won't automatically be spending that. We just can utilize it if it's necessary.
And this action does not authorize the expenditure of all of these other four numbers. Rather, it reserves them for future consideration by a town meeting, correct?
That's correct. So, the articles that you'll be dealing with next are specific projects where we're asking you to expend Community Preservation Act money. This is an opportunity for you to place the ten percent in each of these funds for future use and some into the budgeted reserve. So, this doesn't expend money, this just assigns it to accounts that allows June to keep very careful track of it. And I have to say that June, June's been a marvel during this process because it's a new, new enterprise for the town. So, trying to figure out exactly how we account for these things and, um, the revenue that comes in one year and how you assign it the next, and so, we appreciate June's help a great deal.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Finance Committee Recommendation. Finance Committee recommends this motion? Anyone else want to speak? Hearing no one, I'm going to, uh, ask for an electronic vote. I'll close the voting and we'll get the results. One hundred and eight, yes, four, no. Motion passes in the affirmative. Article twenty-two. This article has to do with, uh, this article has, is a, an appropriation from CPA funds for historic preservation and for the Bullard House for the Historical Commission's use. I am a member of the Historical Commission, I just want to say that so that it's clear. And if somebody thinks I'm doing anything wrong in conducting this vote, please complain, and Billy A can scream, and I'll try to behave myself better. Uh, at any rate, I'm not planning to present this at all, so therefore, I'm going to continue as, as moderating. I'll call on June Miller, the Chairman of the Historical Commission.
June Miller, Chair, Burl Historical Commission, 31 Baker Road. I move that the town appropriate the total sum of $100,000 from the Community Preservation Fund with the sum of $48,466.70 to be transferred from the fund balance reserved for historic resources fiscal year 2022, and the sum of $51,533.30 to be transferred from the fund balance reserved for historical resources fiscal year 2023 for architectural services, including engineering and associated design costs to support the Massachusetts Historical Commission grant, infrastructural rehabilitation at the historic Bullard House located at Four Woodward Avenue in the town of Burl, and further to amend the vote taken under Article nine of the November eighth, 2021 special town meeting pursuant to which $77,483.73 was appropriated from the CPA fund balance reserved for historic resources to allow up to $30,000 of said funds to be used to engage a licensed architect, to support said Massachusetts Historical Commission grant, and structural rehabilitation, including any incidental and related purposes. Said funds to be expended by the Historical Commission in consultation with the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Okay, may I have the motion? Thank you. June, do you want to speak to this further?
Sure. The Historical Commission's goal with this CPA funding request is to rehabilitate structural issues that are present at the Bullard House and with the best professional input that's available to us. Recommendations already made from two building surveys need to be informed by input from architectural services, which would include engineering and associated design costs. At last November's special town meeting, CPA funds were awarded for rehabilitation of the foundation, basement floor, and drainage at the Bullard House, but that article's wording did not include architectural services that are necessary to complete this project. So, part of the funding requested this evening would be dedicated to these services, and remaining funds would be dedicated to carrying out the rehabilitation of the house's structural issues, foundation, drainage, basement floor, floor underlayment, and support. The Commission will be applying for a Massachusetts Historical Commission grant to help with these costs, and the amount awarded by the MHC must be matched, and that match can be leveraged with the CPA funds. This request is only for Community Preservation Act funds that are reserved for historic resources. The Commission is grateful for the availability of this funding. It would allow us to go forward with our mission to create a local history museum.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. Is there anything further from Finance?
Actually, is it printed?
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing I was going to say is just that we, as we were deliberating before the town, before the warrant went out, we hadn't voted on it. We just had some procedural questions regarding how money could be spent from one year into the next. Those questions were answered satisfactorily, so yes, we do have a positive recommendation.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'm going to ask you to vote electronically. I'll close the voting and ask you, and we'll get the results. Ninety-seven, yes, eighteen, no. Motion passes in the affirmative. Article twenty-three, Open Space Motion.
I move that the town...
I move that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire for open space purposes three parcels of land near the junction of Linden Street and Lyman Road in the town of Berlin identified on Assessors Map 9 as parcel 41, consisting of 59.54 acres, more or less, and parcel 42 containing 38.57 acres, more or less, and on Assessors Map 10 as parcel 6 containing 7.67 acres, more or less, with the care, custody, and control of said parcels to be held by the Conservation Commission pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section To authorize the Select Board or its designee to apply for, accept, and extend on behalf of the town of Berlin any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth or other public or private sources to defray any or all, any, excuse me, defray all or a portion of the costs of said acquisition, including but not limited to grants and/or reimbursement from the Commonwealth under the Land Act Grant Program, General Law Chapter 132(a), Section 11, and/or the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and any other funds in any way connected with the scope of this acquisition. To appropriate the total sum of $660,000 towards the acquisition of said parcels and pay for costs incidental or relative thereto, which appropriation shall be funded as follows. $48,466.70 from CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Open Space 2022. $283,724.25 CPA Budgeted Reserve 2022. $17,809.05 CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Open Space 2023. $50,000 from free cash, $260,000 from the Conservation Commission Open Space Account. Amounts previously appropriated, $490,000 from CPA, undesignated in November 2021 Special Town Meeting. Amounts previously designated, $100,000 from Sudbury Valley Trustees fundraising for the purpose of this land acquisition. Total amount for the acquisition, $1,250,000. To authorize the town administrator, the Select Board, and/or the Conservation Commission as applicable, to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing acquisition and further as required by General Law C44(b), Section 12(a). To authorize the Select Board to convey to Sudbury Valley Trustees or any other organization qualified and willing to hold a perpetual conservation restriction on said parcels in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 184.
Okay, want to pass it up? Okay, the motion is as printed on your motion sheet under Article 23. I would point out that as it says in C, we're appropriating $660,000 tonight. And those are the five numbers, the five numbers under D that are with the 5222 Annual Town Meeting. The next two lines and the total amount is there for information, but that's not money we're voting to spend tonight. That's already been taken care of previously. So the $660,000 in those other five numbers is the part that we're appropriating tonight. And all the rest of the things that are here are the procedural necessities to get this done. Do you want to speak to it further?
This article is a combination of several things that we're asking the town to support by voting yes. This is the final step in what has really been a decade or more work by the Conservation Commission to acquire this final and key piece of property at the corner of Linden Street and Lyman Road. With this purchase, the town will ensure that we will always have public access to the entire Mount Pisgah area. Addressing each section in order, Section 8 restates that the Select Board can acquire these properties that total just over 100 acres on behalf of the town. Section B allows the Select Board on behalf of the town to accept any funds that may be received from the land grant or the MVP grant that we will be applying for. This language is mandated by the land grant application to be approved by town meeting. The next two sections outline the final, sources of funding for the 100 acres. I'd like to explain this a bit more. Last November at Special Town Meeting, Conservation Commission received $490,000 from CPA Fund to go towards this acquisition. In this article, we're asking for an additional 350 from CPA Fund. We're also asking town meeting to approve spending of $260,000 from the Conservation Commission's Open Space Fund and to appropriate from free cash to make up the final gap. This final appropriation is important because we need the entire amount approved by this town meeting in order to apply for the state reimbursement grant opportunities. If for whatever reason all of this money is not appropriated tonight, we will still buy the property, but we will not have the opportunity to have any of the money reimbursed to us. These reimbursement grants are not a guarantee, but we know we will not get any if we're not able to apply. The land trust organization, Sudbury Valley Trustees, continues to fundraise and apply for grants on their own for this project. We are fairly confident that we will not need to borrow the $50,000 from free cash and we are very hopeful that we will not need any of it by the time Sudbury Valley Trustees purchases the property at the end of August. But the town must appropriate the money tonight to meet the grant requirements. At the April 6 meeting of the Conservation Commission, we unanimously voted to pay back free cash, any of the $50,000 that we use through our future Solomon Pond mitigation funds. There was a Section E that went out in the warrant and that has been deleted from this. Since the warrant was printed, we have learned that CPA law requires that any CPA funds get repaid before anything else. Section F, which is now Section E, allows the Select Board and the Conservation Commission on behalf of the town to enter into an agreement with Sudbury Valley Trustees to purchase the land. Basically authorizes a PNS and authorizes the conservation restriction that will protect the land in perpetuity.
There is a positive recommendation here from the Capital Planning Committee. The Finance Committee has, I want to call on them for their recommendation now. Stanley?
So Carolyn, I would just ask to clarify because in printed in the warrant, it says 100,000 from free cash. You stated 50,000. My understanding is that you only need to use the 50,000 as you explained to us. I just want to make sure everyone else is clear that when you say 50,000, it's, that number that was printed in their warrant is 100,000.
Correct.
And why is that different?
That it's been modified because we originally thought that we needed to appropriate the full purchase price. We actually need to only appropriate the full appraisal price, which is 1.1. So we need less money than we thought at the time.
Okay, and that was explained to us. We did understand that. I just want to make sure that everyone here is clear that they are only looking for 50,000 in free cash and what we asked them to do after going back and forth numerous times from selling a lot to doing all different things to try to fund, to fund this process, we came down to this number of 50,000 in free cash, but what we asked for is that 50,000 to be paid back out of future open space money so that the town is actually not really, you know, taxpayers are not really out money on this. We need to appropriate it now so that we can acquire this parcel. But what we're asking is for their commitment to this, and they have voted on that, that they will pay back the town that 50,000 from free cash so that the town will be whole on this purchase and we will acquire all of this beautiful open space. So we heartily recommend it at this point.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, we will move toward a, an electronic vote. We'll close the voting and get the results. All right, we have 114 yes, 6 no, which is a 95% vote, so it takes care of the 2/3 required and the 2/3 vote is met. Where's the one she gave me? Okay, we've got it, I'll get it later. So the motion passes. Article 24, Tax Deferral Interest Rate Reduction. Is there a motion under this article? Dennis Ferbey. Which hat, tax collector?
Treasury Collector.
One hat or another?
Sorry about the voice. I've been fighting a cold that included laryngitis. So I'm up here instead of the assessors. I support this and I end up working with them on this when properties go in. So I'll read the motion. I move that the town reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible seniors under GLC 59, Section 5, Clause 41a, from 5% to 2% with such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2022, for fiscal year 2023.
Motion is made and seconded in the same form as it is in your motion sheet. Dennis, do you want to speak to it further?
Yeah, basically, all this is doing is changing the amount of interest that accumulates when an elderly person or a couple put their property in deferred taxes. The taxes don't have to be paid until they choose to pay them and have the ability. They pass away, so I get to deal with dead people. And they sell the property and they can do the program up to 50% of the value of the property, which as you know, in Berlin, just keeps going like this. So it's pretty hard to catch that. So it keeps them in their property for a pretty good length of time and affordably. And there's a whole list of rules at the assessors. You see them for the first step. But basically, we're just trying to give the couples and individuals either a little more that they can have when they, or if they need the income for other purposes.
The Finance Committee has a printed recommendation in favor. Is there anything further? Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 25.
Peg Stone, 40 Lyman. I move that the town transfer from the Public Safety Special Stabilization Fund the amount of $45,000 to pay for costs associated with two years of Bridge Academy training for part-time officers under the Police Reform Law.
Again, will you take appropriate instead of transferred?
Thank you, sorry. I was in the same reading class as Janet.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to ask Police Chief Eric Schartner to come up to the front to explain a little bit more.
Hello, this is a unfunded mandate by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. All of our part-time officers need to attend 200 hours of training and associated costs is driver training as well as firearms training. Two years ago, we could send an officer firearms training for $700. Now it's around 1,500 per officer. So this is going to cover us and we should be all set once this is finished.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 26, Money for the Stabilization Fund. Scott Schultz?
I move that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $197,614 to fund the General Stabilization Fund in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
It's in the same form as the motion on your motion sheet. Does anyone want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Affordable Housing Trust, number 27.
Tim Wheeler, 232 Pleasant Street. And this is an article sponsored by the Planning Board. I move that the town pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 55(c), establish an affordable housing trust for the purpose of providing for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the town of Berlin for the benefit of low and moderate income households as set forth in the Town Meeting handout titled "May 2, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, Article 27, Berlin Municipal Affordable Housing Trust."
It's in the same form as the motion on your motion sheet. Timothy, you want to speak further?
Yes, sir. You were supplied a handout as you came in, which speaks to this article. It explains the roles and responsibilities in the process of creating a housing trust. The Planning Board sponsored this article because it, in our mind, accomplishes a much needed role for the town. I mean, we do very, very well working with the Conservation Commission and other boards in protecting open space and the quality of life in that regard. And we work with other committees like the Finance Committee and Capital Planning and Economic Development for Economic Development for the enhancement of our economic base, and that's, you know, we're enjoying the fact that close to 30% of our tax base is non-residential. But when it comes to housing, the town has not been able to do all that it could, and there are several things that we've endeavored to do over the last few years to assist with the generation of affordable housing. We now are at probably 15% affordability in the town. Our subsidized housing inventory stands at somewhere around 15%, which, for a small community, is pretty remarkable. The CPA is able to generate funds that are to be assigned for housing, and so, as we talked about earlier, 10% of our income through CPA goes, is dedicated to housing. And without an entity to expend that money, it's sort of sitting idle and unutilized. There's a housing partnership, and the housing partnership has certain capacities, but they really can't do some of the things that we could do with the CPA money if we had the housing trust in place. And so that's what this article is doing. It's a five-person board, and that group would end up generating a series of bylaws that would probably come to you at a town meeting in the future. And that group would be able to get involved in a whole range of things, like first-time homebuyer programs or direct rental assistance, rehabilitation of unused structures, purchasing land for the purpose of creating affordable housing, development of new affordable units, creation of special needs housing, and on and on. So there are great many programs that we could utilize some of this CPA money, particularly going after some grant assistance from the state. And without this trust, we're really in a bind not being able to move forward on this endeavor. So we really appreciate your support for this article.
Okay, there is a, the Finance Committee has a positive recommendation printed. You should have the handout that Tim already mentioned that relates to Article 27, and this would establish a town bylaw for the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this motion? Oh, somebody wants to speak.
I'll make one more pitch. So the town is presently conducting or generating a new housing production plan, which all ties into this endeavor. And so tonight, you were given, hopefully, and if you haven't, we'll have these at the back of the hall, an opportunity for you to participate in a survey that helps us establish some of the priorities that you see are the important priorities to look after in regard to housing. So we hope you take advantage of this, because this will help inform this housing trust as to some of the issues that they need to focus on.
If we've exhausted the discussion at this point, I'm going to move to an electronic vote. We're establishing a town bylaw here that I think we should have an accurate vote on, I'll call a halt to the voting and get the results. 107 yes and 2 no, the motion passes in the affirmative. And the next one is Post-Employment Benefits Trust.
"I move that the town establish an Other Post-Employment Benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 20b, for the purpose of funding post-retirement health benefits for eligible Town of Berlin employees."
Motion is made and seconded as it is in your motion sheet under Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, I ask that we recognize two people. Initially, Margaret Nadowitz, our Town Administrator, followed by Richard Hanks, our Building Inspector.
Okay.
Commissioner, sorry, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, Town Meeting. I thought that it might be helpful to explain what OPEB is very briefly. OPEB refers to the cost of public retirees' group health insurance and life insurance plans. In Massachusetts, governmental units, including municipalities, school districts, and other public employers, may pre-fund OPEB under Mass. General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 20. Such pre-funding is recommended by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, otherwise known as GASB, to address the economic obligations associated with retiree benefit costs other than pensions. GASB established accounting and financial reporting standards for United States governments, both state and local, that follow generally accepted accounting principles, or otherwise known as GAAP. The vast majority of Massachusetts governmental units provide some level of retiree health insurance benefits and are working toward pre-funding or have fully funded their OPEB liability. Berlin is one of a small number of Massachusetts municipality that currently does not contribute to such retiree health insurance for town employees, and as such, does not currently have OPEB liability. To be clear, for tonight's purposes, this article only establishes an OPEB trust fund through statute acceptance. It does not fund the trust, nor does it establish the trust's oversight or investment structure, both of which would require future Town Meeting approval and compliance with all relevant governing statutes. Rather, the article tonight presents the opportunity for future Town discussions at the Insurance Advisory Committee level, the Select Board level, and Town Meeting level on the potential for funding OPEB and contributing toward health insurance benefits for Town of Berlin employees. Thank you.
Richard Hanks, Building Commissioner and Town Employee.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Margaret, for the introduction. So again, I'm Richard Hanks, I'm the Chairperson of the Insurance Advisory Committee. We have been reviewing the potential for other post-employment benefits, OPEB. The intent is for the Town of Berlin to provide post-retirement health insurance benefits to certain eligible employees based on established requirements and years of service. This article would only establish, not yet fund, an OPEB trust fund to pay for future retiree health insurance cost. Town Meeting is the only, is the only local body that can prove contributing to retiree health insurance for qualified town employees and funding the OPEB trust fund. The Town of Berlin is only a small handful of communities throughout Massachusetts that currently does not contribute towards retiree health benefits for eligible town employees. The IAC believes that by the town not contributing towards retiree health insurance, that the town is disadvantaged in recruiting and retaining quality municipal employees. Based on an actuary study by the Odyssey Advisory Group, the annual cost to fund OPEB over a 30-year period would be around $150,000. The IAC has identified numerous cost savings initiatives that will fund OPEB with minimal impact to the budget. The goal of this article is to bring equity to Town of Berlin's employees when in comparison with surrounding communities. This will enable the Town of Berlin to recruit and maintain a quality work staff that supports the community. So what we're finding is that the municipal labor market is very competitive. There's not a lot of people that are coming into municipal employment, and as you just passed in Article 25, you see that you're paying the trained police reserve officers. Along with them, you pay the trained firefighters, you pay highway workers to get their CDL and potentially hydraulic license and items such as that. And you've got employees that are just using this town as a training ground, a stepping stone, and when a better opportunity comes up to another, when another community that does offer this benefit, they do move on. So that's the intent, is to help maintain and retain the good employees that will make a career out of this town and not just use it as a training ground.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Is there anything further? Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask you to vote by electronic vote. We'll call the voting to a close and we'll get the results. 99 yes and 9 no, the motion passes in the affirmative. Claire Pond of the Personnel Committee.
Claire Pond, Personnel Committee, 20 Crosby Road. "I move that the town amend the general bylaws by deleting Article 8 personnel and procedures in its entirety and replacing it with the text shown on the Town Meeting handout titled 'May 2022 Annual Town Meeting, Article 29, General Bylaw Amendment, Article 8 Personnel Bylaw,' and also on file in the Town Clerk's office."
The motion is made and seconded, and it is in the same form as it is in your motion sheet. Claire?
This is updating our personnel bylaws in the Town bylaws, which haven't been amended since 1999, and it will also include our new town government with a Town Administrator and some changes there, too.
We have a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee on this. You have a handout for Article 29, General Bylaw Amendment, that was passed out tonight at the door, and this has been on file at the Town Clerk's office and available there prior to that time, and it completely replaces the current personnel bylaw with this new Does anyone want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'm going to call for an electronic vote. We're amending the town bylaws. Can we start voting now? I'm going to call the voting to an end and we'll get the results. 100 yes, 0 no, a unanimous vote.
This one's a long one, so sit back, get comfy. All right, front and back, you think I'm kidding. "I move that the town amend the general bylaws by inserting in Article 6, Public Roads, Ways and Places, a new Section 9. Excessive noise from compression brakes prohibited as follows. It is unlawful for the driver of any vehicle to use or operate or cause to be used or operated along any public way maintained by the Town of Berlin, any compression brake, engine brake, dynamic brake, or mechanical exhaust device designed to assist in the deceleration or braking of any motor vehicle, and such device or devices result in excessive loud or otherwise unusual noise." Keep going. "This section may be enforced through any lawful means in law or in equity, including but not limited to, non-criminal disposition pursuant to General Law 40, uh, yeah, General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21d. If enforced through non-criminal disposition, any person who violates any provision of this section shall be subject to a penalty of $250 per violation, and for such purposes, the police chief and any police officer of the town shall be the enforcing authority."
Motion is made and seconded in the same form as it is on your motion sheet. Peg, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, with permission, I'd like to ask Chief Schartner to come back to the front.
The Traffic Safety Advisory Committee looked at multiple towns. Most towns ban the use of jake brakes. We're not looking to ban the use because they are definitely a safety feature on these commercial vehicles. It's the modified exhaust, the loud exhaust, that we're actually going after on these. So it's not banning all jake brakes together, it's just the modified exhaust.
Does anyone want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, again, I will go for an electronic vote here because we're doing a We'll close the voting and get the result. The vote is 95 yes, 12 no, the motion passes in the affirmative. We now go to a series of zoning bylaw modifications, Articles 31 through 36, and we'll be hearing from the Planning Board. Tom.
Good evening. Tom Sanford, 425 Sawyer Hill Road. "Article 31, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Article 14, Definitions, by inserting in proper alphabetical order the new definitions as listed in the warrant for this meeting."
All right, the motion is made and seconded, and again, this is, refers to the warrant, and so if you look for Article 31 in the original mail that you got, you'll find the specific definitions that are covered under this motion. Anything you want to say further?
I have a report.
Oh, yeah, the report of the Planning Board.
Yep. The Berlin Planning Board held a
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 26, 2022, to consider the comments concerning Article 31 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 2, 2022. At the planning board meeting, also held on Tuesday, April 22, 2022, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed, to support Article 31.
Tom, do you want to speak further on this or not?
Sure. The planning board, in conjunction with the Zoning Board of Appeals, looked at some of our definitions. And we modified some of the language to make it more clear and also to make sure that we closed some creative loopholes that people were using.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? This is an amendment to the zoning bylaws, so it requires a two-thirds vote. And we will produce a recorded vote with our electronic doodads. You can start voting now. The vote is ninety-five yes, six no. That's 94 percent vote, so it passes with the required two-thirds. Article 32. Tom.
Article 32, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Article 14 Definitions, floor area, by deleting the existing text in its entirety and replacing it with the language printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion made and seconded to redo the Definitions Floor Area. Report of the planning board.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 26, 2022, to consider the comments concerning Article 32 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 2, 2022. At the planning board meeting, also held on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed, to support Article 32.
Do you want to speak to it, Tom?
Sure. The planning board, in conjunction with the building inspector or building authority, building commissioner, sorry, building commissioner, thank you, looked at the current way that we were calculating the floor area ratio, and it was very cumbersome. So we worked on a simpler definition that was less cumbersome.
Anyone else want to speak on this? Yes. Elizabeth McGill.
Elizabeth McGill, 32 Village Lane. I don't understand. Are we changing math? Area is normally...I don't know what we're doing. The area is normally multiplying two numbers and here we're adding something. I don't understand.
Bill, it's the way that you calculate the area for additions or for an in-law apartment gets calculated to figure out the ratio of how much you can add to the dwelling. But you have to figure out the floor area of what you have initially. So we're not adding to, we're just changing how it's calculated. We're simplifying the calculus.
It doesn't make sense. I don't know.
Lynn Ryan of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
We have had difficulty in the past computing what 35 percent is of the floor area. There was a long list of things that are included and excluded. The old bylaw said you exclude hallways, you exclude walls. So it would mean you'd have to take the thickness of the wall and take that away from the floor area. Halls, stairways weren't included. So this, it became a mathematical nightmare to try to discern what the floor area was. This will make it much simpler, and I'm sure our building commissioner will appreciate it also.
Like many things in the law, something that's simple isn't. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote electronically. We're amending the zoning bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote. Begin voting now. Ninety-seven yes, eight no. That's a 92 percent vote, so the two-thirds vote is satisfied. Motion passes. Article 33, Home-Based Contracting Business. Yes. Jay Teach of the planning board.
Jay Teach, 220 Sawyer Hill Road. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 540, Home-Based Contracting Business, as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded. You have the planning board's report.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 26, 2022, to consider comments concerning Article 33 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held today. At the planning board meeting, also held on that same date, Tuesday, April 26, 22, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed, to Article 33.
Okay, we're working with the amending home-based contracting business as printed in the warrant, the original warrant that was mailed out to you under Article 33. Jay?
So in several zones in town, particularly residential agricultural, where most of our homes are, you have...
Want to speak more directly?
You have the opportunity to have an accessory use of your property, which includes what we've defined as a home-based contracting business. And in the zoning bylaw, there are a whole set of conditions, including getting a permit that has to get renewed, I think, every five years in order to do that. But the modifications for this motion are one, that the business has to be owned and operated by a resident and owner of the building. So, you know, only an owner resident can have a home-based contracting business on the property. And the second significant change is there's a table in the zoning bylaw for how many vehicles of different gross vehicle weights you can have on the property associated with this business. And you're allowed to have private vehicles, though, without those limits. And what this does is defines any vehicle that has got marking for your business as no longer being a private vehicle, so you can't end up with more than the specified number in the table.
Does someone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, we're going to amend the zoning bylaw, and therefore we have to have a two-thirds vote. And I'll call for an electronic vote under Article 33 on Home-Based Contracting Business. I'll close the voting and we'll get the result. We have 81 yes, 14 no. That's 85 percent in favor, so it covers the two-thirds required. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 34, Noise. The whole noise section is redone. Jay?
Teach again.
If you thought that floor area was something, well, you'll read about noise.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 1020, Noise, by deleting Section 1021, General Requirements in its entirety, and replacing it with the language printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded. Report of the planning board.
The planning board held a public hearing on April 26, 2022, to consider comments regarding Article 34 of the annual town meeting warrant to be held today. At the planning board meeting, also held on Tuesday, April 26, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed, to Article 34.
Motion is shown in your motion sheet, and the planning board has voted four in favor, zero opposed. Jay?
So there are three kind of primary changes here. So one of them is that there was actually an error that we hadn't noticed for a long time in the previous noise bylaw that, two of the times overlapped, like between 10:00 and 11:00 p.m., I think you had two different noise thresholds. You could choose which one you wanted, I guess. So we fixed that. But we also believe that the number, so sound is measured in dBA, decibels, and we believe the number that we had was a little bit too low. It was pretty low. And so we've increased it by, I think, five dBA, which is not a huge amount. But there are also some, two new exclusions. One is, there's a list, if you look at the warrant, the use of power tools and lawn mowers and chainsaws are excluded because they're way over that limit normally. And the second thing, more significant, is sounds emitted for various kind of events, so parades, public gatherings, concerts, sporting events. We're suggesting that the select board would have the ability to issue permits, special permits, for those events, and then they wouldn't be subject to the noise bylaw. And in particular, we're suggesting that there might be permits for, like all summer, you know, multiple dates issued for some of these events, if they're like a concert or something that's recurring.
Does someone else want to speak on Article, the motion under Article 34?
Karen Brown, 183 River Road West. In general, we appreciate keeping the noise lower. River Road is a community that is greatly affected by the noise. The 1021.2 above limitations shall not apply to giving permits to construction companies and various businesses in the town that can make loud noise is very disruptive. We have plenty of noise in the River Road community based on the mall and all of the activities that have been going on and being built in that area. So I would ask all of you to reconsider changing the noise requirement and keeping it as low as possible and giving residents the opportunity to enjoy their life here in Berlin. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to speak on this motion?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I just have a question. Snow removal, that usually takes place at night, so there's less traffic and less possibility of, you know, I just was wondering if that's, why snow removal? I just know when, in my household, everybody leaves at like 9:00 to do snow removal, and it's only 10:00, that's, you're not going to be able to clean up the center of town in an hour. I'm just asking a question.
It's excluded.
Janet, it's excluded.
Oh, that's excluded?
Yes.
Jay, if there's anything you can say about...
Snow removal is one of the exclusions.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. It just made no sense.
We like snow removal.
It's my concussion.
Claire Pond Gildon, 3 Linden. I'm curious how the number of 60 decibels was arrived at. Is there any, was there any survey conducted, or was this just an arbitrary number that was selected? 60 decibels is actually not that loud. Regular human conversation ranks at around 60 decibels. So this would exclude any gathering that a resident may choose to have in their own backyard. We would very quickly exceed that limit. So I'd like to hear an explanation on that. Thank you.
Yeah, this turned out to be a very complicated issue. The noise limit is actually at the property boundary. But still, when you start looking at, when is noise annoying? It depends on a lot of things. For example, what's the background noise? Like if we set a very low level for a quiet environment, you know, you'd never meet it in most of the parts of town where there's already a lot of ambient noise from traffic and whatever else. It was a very difficult thing to do. And the other problem is that noise is like light or color or something, there's so many different flavors of it. So certain noises can be very quiet but incredibly annoying and vice versa. And rather than come up with some really elaborate scheme for regulating it, we just said, let's try to pick some reasonable number, and then we have a tool to do some type of enforcement, because it's always going to get, you know, discussed and probably decided with a larger set of issues than just how many dBA were being produced. It's very difficult even to measure it.
Okay, Scott. Scott, come then. Peter?
Scott Schultz, 36, Bridge Road. I was curious why there's no time exemption for like the lawn mowers and chainsaws. So basically, there's an exception 24/7, as opposed to you have an exemption for, you know, the vacuuming, sweeping between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. So why is a lawnmower or chainsaw allowed to be 24 hours for the exemption?
Do you want to try to answer it?
Can I get some help from someone who can answer that? Can I get some help from someone who can answer that? I think one, I'll tell you, that's right. One of the considerations we had is that we're a right-to-farm community, and we were not inclined to rule against activities that sometimes need to get done outside those hours, you know? We run our tractors at night when we're collecting hay and things like that.
All right. Tim, also from the planning board, did you want to address the last question?
Just a clarification. I mean, I think it's important to understand that, in general, the bylaw stayed the same. So a lot of these things were there from prior, the prior bylaw. So it was just those three modifications that we made. And as Jay pointed out, there's a great deal of complexity in trying to deal with noise. And in speaking with town council as we approached this, I think that what we, as a planning board, may do in the future is suggest that it become a town bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw enforced not by the zoning commissioner but by other entities in town, and that we look more comprehensively at noise and see what other towns in the Commonwealth are doing. But town council suggested to us that this is an issue that has no end to it, I guess. I mean, it's just a complex problem, so. But it's important to understand that a lot of the questions that you're asking are related to the fact that, in the past, these items were included in the zone, and then we just, we left those alone. That has to do with snow removal, parking lot vacuuming, and some of these other issues that you've been talking about.
Peter, did you want to speak? Peter Hoffman?
Peter Hoffman, 183 Randall. I don't know if there's an appetite for an additional exception, but generators would seem to fall under the exceptions, especially emergency generators. And if there's an appetite, I'll make a motion to amend the exceptions and add letter G generators.
Are there others that wish to speak? I got no answers.
Gail Terman, 81 Village Court. I would love to have that generator thing, because a lot of people rely on them for things like medical equipment, and they're quite noisy. But if the power goes off in the middle of the night, it's really important that those keep going. Thanks.
Keith Susie, 23 Coburn. I think instead of trying to add to the list of things we can have exceptions for, if we could make an amendment to, say, expected ambience. So this decibel level is above expected ambience. So, for example, using a leaf blower is expected during the day, so that's above 60 dB. It goes to 80 or 100 or so, but we expect that, it's expected ambience. We wouldn't expect that at 2:00 in the morning, for example, and vice versa. Children playing during the day will go above 60 dB as well. But, you know, we wouldn't expect our neighbors to call the police on children playing in their backyard. So I propose that we make an amendment to include 60 dB and 50 dB above expected ambience.
Yes. Mary?
Thank you. Mary Porter, 8 Highland Street. I want to speak to my fellow citizens and say, vote yes on this tonight. And here's why. I've been involved in an appeal to the zoning board of appeals on this section of the zoning law. And as Tim Wheeler just said, we have some more questions to answer in this town about how we regulate noise, even if we want to. But there were, there are issues in the existing zoning bylaw that are fixed here. And so what I'd like to ask people to do, or say this is what I'd like to see you do, is, is let's fix that first step tonight, and then take the next step in order, and let the planning board and others in the town consider how we want to do this. It is, as Jay said, it's a very complex issue. You know, the quality of the sound affects what levels are acceptable. Eric was exactly right. Human speech is right here in this area. But this is the fix we need today. And all of these other amendments, let's talk about for next time, or when we're ready. Thank you.
I think perhaps we're ready to vote. The motion is to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 1020, noise, by deleting Section 1021, general requirements in its entirety, and replacing it with the language printed in the warrant for this meeting. That would be under Article 34 in the warrant for this meeting. And again, we're amending the zoning bylaw, so I will ask for an electronic vote, and we'll begin voting now. We'll close the voting, and we'll get the results. The vote is 85 yes, 17 no, 83% in favor, which satisfies the two-thirds required. So the motion passes. Article 35, Table of Accessory Use Regulations Regarding Home Occupations. Yes. Carolyn of the planning board.
Going to put on my planning board hat now. Carolyn McDonald, 108 Gates Pond Road. Article 35, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 340, Table of Accessory Use Regulations, by deleting the current list for the use titled "Home Occupation," and replacing it as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded. The report of the planning board.
Planning board, the Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 26, 2022, to consider the comments, to consider comments concerning Article 35 at the annual town meeting warrant, to be held on May 2, 2022. At the planning board meeting also held on Tuesday, April 22, 2022, planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 35.
Carolyn, you want to speak to this?
So as it says in the summary, the current home occupations are allowed by right in the residential agricultural zone. The change would make it necessary to receive a special permit and site plan approval to establish such a use. This would allow abutters the opportunity to comment on the proposal at a public hearing before approval.
Do others want to speak on this motion? Again, the changes are on the original mailout that you received for the warrant for the meeting under Article 35. Yes, Peggy Stone?
No, I was pointing to Lynn.
Lynn Ryan.
Just a technical question. Should there be an ACR column?
A little closer to the mic, Lynn.
Should there be an ACR column at the end with a no in it?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to amend? Somebody's got to write it out.
I make a motion to amend the table, adding a column ACR with an N under it.
And you've got to write it out on a paper. Give it to me. Somebody's got to write it out. At this point, we go to the debate on the motion to amend. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the motion to amend that was just made? Yep. The motion to amend Article 35, the motion under 35, to add zone ACR, which is agricultural conservation recreation, with an N under that column. The piece in the article has all the other kinds of districts, but it didn't include ARC. So we're adding that with an N. In other words, this would not be allowed in an ACR district. Anyone else want to speak on that amendment? If not, I'll ask you to vote by voice. This is to just add that ACR and the no. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes in the affirmative. That amendment is added to the original motion. So the original motion now is to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 340, Table, Accessory Use Regulations, by deleting the current listing for the use titled "Home Occupation," and replacing it as printed in the warrant for this meeting, and adding to that for the ACR zone, an N. And I'll ask you to vote on that with electronic, this is the whole thing now. We're voting on the whole thing by electronic vote, and the voting can begin now. I'll close the voting, and we'll get the result. The vote is 72 yes, eight no, and the, that's a 90% vote, so the motion passes for the required two-thirds majority. Article 36, Nonconforming Uses and Structures. Carolyn?
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Article 11, Nonconforming Uses and Structures, by deleting the current text in its entirety and replacing it as printed in the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded, as it is on your motion sheet. And again, this refers to the changes that are found under Article 36 in the mailed warrant for the meeting that you received. Report of the planning board.
Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 26, 2020, to consider comments concerning Article 36 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 2, 2022. At the planning board meeting also held on Tuesday, April 26, 2020, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 36.
Want to speak further to it, Carolyn?
So there's a lot of changes here. The changes explain a manner of nonconforming use and nonconforming structures, the way they're treated. The change would also clarify that nonconforming use in a residential agricultural zone may not be extended, altered, or changed. So part of this was at the request of the ZBA for some clarification on how to handle these situations. We had lots of conversation, and this is what we came up with.
Someone else want to speak on this motion in regard to nonconforming uses? Okay, we have, again, to amend the zoning bylaw as described in Article 36. I'll ask you to vote by electronic vote, starting now. I'll close the voting, and we'll get the numbers. The vote is 70 yes, seven no, 90% in favor. The motion carries in the affirmative. And Article 37.
First of all, the select board would like to wish Margaret a very happy birthday. And Paul McElk. And we'd also like to thank her very much for the last three years, all of her hard work. Now on to the motion. I move to adjourn this meeting to work. Now on to the motion. I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May ninth, 2022, at twelve noon at the Berlin Town Office's twenty-three Linden Street, Lower Level, at which time and place, the polls will be open until eight P.M. for the election of town officers under Article thirty-seven of the warrant for this meeting, and that upon the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting will be dissolved.
Motion is made and seconded. It's a motion to adjourn, so it's not debatable. I want to say before we go that I'll ask the people help with chairs, as we usually do. There are chair caddies in the back of the room. Any that won't fit on the chair caddies can be leaned against the wall on this side of the room, and they'll get put away where they need to be outside. And I'll ask, and I'll thank everybody for their cooperation and how incredibly easy it's been to have us done it nine oh nine P.M. All those in favor of adjourning, aye? Opposed, no? May be adjourned.